It's six o'clock. It's time to call to order our meeting for the March 4th, 2024 Board of Education meeting. We do have a quorum. Ms. Hayes is here in person as well as Dr. Lindsay, Mr. Peace, myself, and I understand that Ms. Anderson is joining us virtually as well as Mrs. LeBrett. So we do have a quorum. Right now, I'd like to call for a moment of silence. Our vision in Graham County Public Schools is every student will reach his or her full potential, prepared to thrive in a changing world. In our mission, we empower every student every day. Mr. Peace, if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thus, Dan.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to abide by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Peace. Next item on our agenda is to adopt our agenda as it is unless there are some changes. Are there any changes needed to the agenda?
Motion to adopt agenda is presented.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. We will adopt the agenda as written. I'm sorry, we're going to have to vote again on that. I had forgotten that with two people virtual, we do need to do a roll call though. Ms. Lindsay.
Uh, yeah.
The second.
Second motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, your second motion.
Yes, Dr. Sack.
Mr. Peace?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay. Ms. LeBrett?
Yes.
Dr. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And you may have to remind me again, Ms. Anderson. Our next section of the agenda is Communication and Community. First, we'll hear from Dr. Winborn, our superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Board members, team members, those in the audience and those joining virtually. It's good to see you all this evening. March is here, of course, and by my count, we only have a little over 60 days of school left for this academic year. And while the year seems like it's zooming by, we have many more days of very important teaching and learning left. And we're working very hard to make sure every minute counts and that we remain focused on the priorities to finish this year strong. This week is Read Across America Week, which kicks off National Reading Month, and I know many Board members are scheduled to be or have already been in our schools reading as guest readers to our students. I myself have had the pleasure to be in two schools already, and it was the absolute highlight of my day. Today, I was at West Oxford Elementary School and got to read to the dual-language first grade class, and I read a book to them in Spanish, and they were just absolutely delightful. And it was, it was truly wonderful. So, thank you, West Oxford, and I look forward to reading it at all of our other elementary schools this week. This is also Music in Our Schools Month, for those of you who didn't know, so be sure to thank our educators who bring the joy of music to our students and give them a big shout out when you get a chance. And of course, this is Women's History Month, and it's the perfect time to celebrate all the amazing accomplishments of women in our country's history, but also the ongoing leadership and contributions to educating students right here in our community. We have some amazing and very talented women that are doing a lot for the students in Graham County Public Schools, and I just want to thank all of them for all that you I would like to also take this opportunity to thank the Board members and our staff for their hard work in preparing our 2024-25 budget. You're going to hear some additional information about this tonight from Ms. Hines, but we have been working very hard behind the scenes. And while there's still some work to do to be fully prepared, the planning and attention to detail, attention to detail that's already occurred really gives, inspires me, gives me confidence to believe that we're poised as best we can be for the upcoming potentially very challenging year. And Ms. Hines, of course, will be sharing more information about that. There's no doubt that funding's going to be an issue, but as I have said many times before, we will do all we can to protect our schools and push resources as close to, as possible to the classroom, making it a priority to support our hard-working educators and those staff who work alongside the children every day. That will remain my priority. So I look forward to a productive meeting tonight. I know, once again, so much of what's on the agenda tonight has flowed directly from our committee work, so thank you for your countless hours on that. And at this time, I will defer to my Board Chair for her remarks. Thank you.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to welcome each of you here in attendance this evening, whether in person or joining us by livestream. Perhaps one of the most significant developments in our public school system this year has been the approval of our Community Eligibility Provision Grant, which provides free lunch and breakfast for all students for the remainder of the school year, with the opportunity to renew our application for the next school year. We would like to thank Meg Strong, our Child Nutrition Director, for all of her hard work on bringing this to fruition, in addition to helping our families financially. More importantly, it is hard to learn when a student is hungry. We have seen increased participation in our school lunch program since this started, so we're very pleased with the reception this program has had. February was a short month, but a very busy month for our committees. Most everything on our agenda has come before one of our committees, and I want to thank all our Board members for the time, thought, and energy you have given to the work of the committees in preparing us for tonight's meeting. In addition to committee meetings, some of the activities, I've had the pleasure of attending, were the presentation of our school systems' needs to our Graham County Commissioners at their recent retreat, the Career Fair at CG Cradle, and with some other Board members, a tour of Phoenix Academy, in which we learned more about our alternative school program Cadence Academy. Also attended the Wax Museum celebrating Black History at Tar River Elementary School. Students had researched famous Black Americans and presented an oral report about his or her person. They did a fabulous job with their presentations and their displays. Also attended the J.F. Webb Schools Black History Museum, which also featured the Webb Marching Band and a meal. And I have to say, our marching band at Webb has really, really grown. Also had the pleasure of attending a meeting of the Graham County Human Relations Committee and listened to three presentations by three students from Graham Early College. They did a great job with their essays. This concludes my remarks, but now we're going to hear from our other Board members, who are going to give you some information about their activities and their committee Mr. Peace, start with you and go around the table.
Oh, thank you. I serve as Chair of the Operations Committee, and we have a, we had a meeting. We all had the minutes already in the, in your board docs. The, there's a lot going on in the Operations Committee meeting, and that was, is amazing to me to know how you're going to pay for all the stuff we need to do. At any rate, that organization, that committee is really doing all it can to make sure that we spend our community members' dollars wisely, and at this tough time in our budget, hopefully we can get, accomplish most of the things that we need to really get done. Thank you.
Ms. LeBrett?
Yes. Um, so I had the pleasure of sitting in on the Academic and Finance Committees this past month. Um, we, well, a lot of things are going to be discussed in the meeting today, so I don't feel I need to really go over a whole bunch of extra things, but we talked a lot about some of the learning loss that has occurred, and we looked at a lot of trends, specifically in the Academic and Curriculum Academic Committee, which I think will be really helpful for people to see, and I'm looking forward to actually the staff sharing some of that information. And then we also had some updates to our graduation dress code and those kinds of things, so.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrett. Dr. Cadet?
It's not on you.
Ms. Anderson. I'm going to look at your chair and pretend you're there.
Okay. Yes, I, I know a lot of the different things that we, that I attended, I know the Chair was there as well, such as the Career Fair at Cradle and, you know, the visit to Phoenix Academy, and then also with the Human Relations Commission that I'm a member of, you know, having our students read their essays from the MLK Essay Contest. So, and also from that, we did end up giving them their recognition, their certificates, recognition as well as the monetary for them all being winners of the essay contest. Also, for this being the Teacher of the Year with HRC, Phoenix Academy, there was one more thing with the Policy, the Policy Committee, also attended that. The last thing is to mention, I am on the Teacher of the Year's Committee, and we did meet several days doing interviews for the schools, each school's Teacher of the Year. So, I had a busy time before I headed out. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lindsay?
Yes. I had a chance to go back to seal on Phoenix Academy, whilst I spent some time, and I'm really pleased with all the great things that have been done, they have approved teaching and learning. I think we're still doing a great job and trying to make sure that it's a great learning environment. Also a chance to go to the CTE Recognition Program last week here, where a lot of staff members received certificates for years of service as well, and also served on the Finance Committee, which should be shared more by Mrs. Hines here. But I missed the Accounting Retreat due to sickness here, and I've been thinking a lot about our schools here and all the things that we face. I just want to share with the group here tonight here why I feel that public schools are just the foundation of our communities here, so please share, let me share through my thoughts about that. I missed the Retreat due to sickness, but I heard it was a good meeting. Not sure if good means that we will get the requested financial support from the Accounting Commissioners, or it was a good day of collaboration. However, I must say, our schools are faced with a mountain of challenges, and I understand that all departments in accounting are asking for money to operate their program. But when I see schools as the foundation of this community, it weighs heavy on me, wondering what can we do to massage the mindset of those who make the financial decisions to give us what we requested. Three thoughts come to mind. Number one, when families consider moving to Graham County, they want to know, how are the schools? And I want to be able to tell them that Graham County Public Schools are a viable, viable option where learning is our top priority. The retention of our good teachers is a must, and resources to support their teaching and student learning will improve student retention and graduation rates. Also, when businesses and industry consider relocating to Graham County, they are going to want to know about the workforce. Can they handle the demands of their product? Many may ask for an interest exam, which will require most likely reading and math. And finally, we all are concerned about crime in our community, but I feel safe to say that a great deal of crime that occurs in our community here are committed by those who left school without graduating. And I'm sure you all can hear what they're saying, from school to the prison pipeline. When prisons are built by the number of children who fail the reading and math LG test scores, it's predicted that these students will not become high school graduates, because each year they will get further and further behind, and when they reach the age to drop out, that is the poor decision that they will make. However, more than likely, these students will remain in their community with no employable skills to retain employment. Schools cannot educate junior alone, but we want our entire community to be, be a safe place, where we feel safe in and outside of our homes. It is imperative that we take a closer look at how the foundation of our schools must remain strong and a good quality, so we all can be proud, the students who leave our schools, ready for the workforce, military, or a two-year, four-year university here. Educating our kids is our job. So please, please, Commissioners who are listening at home or wherever you may be, please give us what we request. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
Um, so, we, we had a lot going on this past, past month, so I was able to go to a few things. I think the things that I enjoyed the most were the visits to, to the schools. I had the opportunity to go see the Tar River Wax Museum that celebrated Black History Month, and the students there did a fantastic job. And I had the opportunity to read to a couple of fifth-grade classes there as well, so that was really fun. One thing that I did want to tell the Board about was I had a person from the community reach out to me, and her name is Erin Emery, and she was wanting to do something to honor the life of her mother, a woman by the name of Catherine Emery. And she actually was a substitute teacher here in Graham County during the 1990s and the early 2000s. So what she did was she reached out to her church, Open Arms Fellowship, and the community, and they got a huge donation of books together for our book bus, which I went and picked up last week. So I'm really grateful for that. I think that's an amazing way to honor a family member that served in education, and I just thought that that was really special, that they chose to honor their mother in that way. And again, her name was Catherine Emery. And for our Legislative Committee update, that was really exciting. We had our first inaugural meeting of our Legislative Committee, and we were able to actually get all three of our state legislators in the, in the room with us, so Senator Bodie, Representative Winslow, and Representative Sossman. We had some great conversations. We talked about the funding models and the differences between traditional versus charter schools. I hope all the Board members read the minutes, which our staff did an excellent job on, was, was very encompassing of how the meeting went. We also talked about some other joint legislative goals, some possible grants and special appropriations that we can work together on in the upcoming budget season. It was just a really great meeting, so I look forward to a lot more of those. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Lindsay mentioned CTE. I have a button on tonight that says, "I love CTE," because I promised I'd wear it. Vocational education is alive and well. It's just under the umbrella of career technical education, but we have people ask, "Why don't you have vocational education?" We do. It's career technical education. So I just wanted to put that plug in for that program tonight. The next item on our agenda is North Carolina School Board Association Legislative Committee. We got correspondence indicating that we had the opportunity to have a member of our Board apply to be nominated to join a committee at our state level, so we sent that out to all of our Board members, and it would be for the coming school year. I guess we would call that the 24-25 school year. So, do we have anyone that is interested in doing that?
I'm interested.
Okay. Do we have a motion for, from somebody from the floor to approve Ms. Hayes to represent us?
My motion to nominate Danielle or approve Danielle.
Motion's been made. Second, Mr. Peace is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that you, Ms. LeBrett?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you for agreeing to do that. That'll be very, very helpful. The next item on our agenda is Item 305, Graham County Public Schools Policy Revisions First Read. I'll turn this over to Attorney Dubison to go over that with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, we have two sets of policies tonight. These are coming to you for the first time, so this is a first reading, and if approved tonight, they will move on to come back to the next Board meeting. These have all been through the Policy Committee, which took the revisions recommended by the School Board Association Policy Service, and then made some of its own local adaptations. One that I will highlight for you, 4352, that was a revision suggested by the Policy Committee. There are some updates to 4370 Student Discipline Hearings, mainly to, they, they should not change the actual procedures that are being used, but just to more clearly reflect them. And there was a recommendation as well to repeal current policy 4332 Gang Control as being a little bit outdated, and also information that is covered in other places, including the Code of Conduct. Any other questions?
Is this something we can waive first read on, if we want to?
You could, if Board members feel comfortable that the, that these are ready to go into the manual without a second read.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve policy revisions with a waive of first read.
We have a second?
Second.
Ms. Anderson, seconded. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ms. Anderson said aye. Ms. LeBrett?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes. They're adopted on first read. The next one is second read.
The next batch of policies you reviewed at your last meeting, so this is a second reading, and I'll just, as, as we reviewed them last time, I'll just pause for any questions
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
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 We've heard from our remote people.
Yes, yes, aye.
Okay. Motion has been made to adopt these secondary policies, and it's been made and approved. The next item is public comment.
Madam Chair, we did not have any online public comments, but we do have four people signed up. So, as a reminder, each speaker will receive no more than five minutes to present comments. However, the public comment section will not exceed 30 minutes total, except by majority vote of the Board. Speakers will be recognized in the order in which they sign in. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the Board with the additional information in written form. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the Board, except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. The laws and policies of North Carolina provide that issues or concerns involving individual personnel matters are confidential and therefore not appropriate for public comment settings. Concerns related to personnel issues may be addressed through applicable GCPS personnel, the grievance policy, or other applicable policies. Profane or vulgar language or personal abuse against any individual will not be permitted. And the first speaker tonight is April Schaefer on the topic of safety and athletics.
Good evening, Chair Williams, Dr. Winborn, School Board, and the Admin Team. Tonight, I come to you as a parent with just a few suggestions. When it comes to safety, one thing I would like for you to consider is having our bus drivers to be CPR certified. As many of you know, last Thursday, a middle schooler died on a school bus in Gaston County, and that could have been prevented had our bus driver known how to do CPR. And it was a medical condition, but I would like for us to be proactive instead of reactive. Another thing on safety that I would like to discuss is Election Day. As you know, tomorrow is Election Day, and many of the polls will be held at our schools. Unfortunately, we did not cancel school, so I am concerned about the safety of our children as we have many visitors coming onto our campuses. So in the future, I would ask that you please consider having it a no-school day on elections. When it comes to athletics, recently, the South Graham AD has resigned. One thing I would like for you to consider when it comes to athletic directors is to enable us to have assistant ADs. So when something happens like that, and we do have a turnover, we can still keep the ball rolling. Also, when, when we're talking about athletics, I did present to you about having athletic cords. And I am very grateful that you did decide to do scholar athlete cords for graduation, but I would like for you to consider that all of our athletes, especially those that have four years serving as athletes in our school system, to have the honor of wearing a cord. They have represented our school well. They have followed the guidelines of the NCHSA rules, and I just feel like they are deserving of that, especially if we allow clubs to have cords. That I feel like our athletes should fall into that category as well. Again, thank you for your time and your consideration in the topics that I mentioned. Our next speaker is Michael Magnanti on new members swearing in.
Good evening, Board members. Thank you so much for allowing me to visit with you and to offer my comments. As we all know, tomorrow is Election Day, so we're all very excited, at least I am, and also very busy. And I just would like to discuss with you new members swearing in. Currently, new members get sworn in in the month of December, which is quite a long ways from Election Day, which is in March. It's also in the middle of the school year, which doesn't really make logical sense. It would make most logical sense, from where I'm sitting, if the new members would be sworn in August 1st, so that this way, they would have the opportunity to get acclimated prior to the new school year, and this way would also give the current Board members the time to finish their commitments for this current school year. So swearing in, I, I know that's always the way that we've done it, but just because that, that's the way we've always done it, doesn't mean that's the way we should always do it. And so, I, I would encourage you to consider swearing in the new Board members who are going to be voted on tomorrow, and acknowledge the voters and what their wishes are, and have them sworn in August 1st as opposed to in December. And thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
And our next speaker is Jackie Olshaefer on volunteering.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Winborn and the Admin staff. I wanted to take a few moments to thank you for your prompt aid in helping with the challenges that I spoke about last month with regards to volunteering. I hope that other volunteers have not encountered the same problems, especially with the lengthiness of the process. I've had the opportunity to work with six students over the last several weeks, and must say that I am truly excited to be back working with children after being away from the classroom for an extended period of time. Hopefully, the time spent will benefit those students. And thank you to those Board members who encouraged me after the last meeting. Their kind words meant a lot to me. So anyone who is thinking about volunteering, take that plunge. I think you will find it very rewarding. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And our last speaker is Georgiana Konsinski, new member swearing in.
And our last speaker is Georgiana Konsinski, new member swearing in.
Thank you so very much for the opportunity, Superintendent Winborn, Board of Education. I'm going to try to pull this up, okay. I too am speaking on the swearing in. And we do have an election tomorrow. We will have some new members coming in. Some will be leaving. I believe that the swearing in should also be for an effective date of August 1st. Perhaps swear them in in July. The reason is, after the county retreat, you all explained how much the schools need. Maintenance, retention, education needs. The schools have decisions for the next school year. If these board members don't come on until December, those decisions for the next school year will already have been made. A budget will have been set, and they will have wasted six months of their first term. Let the people's choices count and be willing to accept the change that the citizens want, especially any seat that hasn't been chosen by the voters prior. That's what democracy means, of the people and by the people. I really hope you will consider this. I wish all the candidates luck tomorrow. I thank the ones that have provided service for so many years. And I'm hoping that this new change on the board will bring change to our schools for the better. Thank you very much for your time.
Next, we have consent items. We have item 401, which has to do with contracts for artillery placements for CG Grahamville Central High School. Grounds amendments for item 402. Approval amendments 403, and 404, 5, and 6. And then we have sole source situation, where we have to make a decision and approve that as part of the consent. We can group these any way you want. We can do them individually. We can do them all at one time. The ones on the sole source vendor, I think some of this has been discussed in committee. Then we also do have a 411, which is a laptop refresh that, hopefully, you've read the information. But if you do have any questions about any of this, certainly won't be able to answer them. Do we have any thoughts on this, people?
I have questions about 4.07, 4.08, 4.09, and 4.11.
So do you want to, let's go ahead and group the others together.
I'm open to that unless anybody else has any other objections or questions to add.
Do we have a motion to do that? Did you want to make that motion?
Motion to approve all consent items as presented, except for 4.07, 4.08, 4.09, and 4.11.
Second.
Repeat.
4.07, 4.08, 4.09, and 4.11. So motion to approve all the other ones, except for the ones that I just said.
We're going to consider those individually, the others.
Ms. LeBrecht, did you just second that?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
We had a motion made to do the, all of them except the ones we just mentioned that we'll consider individually. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I hear from our people remote, they have said aye as well. So motion is made, carried, and is approved. Okay?
All right, so, or, I'll just start with the first one. So for 4.07 and 4.08, I still just have, I still just don't like them. That's it. I just don't like them. I think they're terrible. I don't think they serve our students. I don't think they raise our academic standards. And that's, you know, that's just personal opinion from actually using Newsy LA and IXL and watching my children use them and watching the struggle that they've experienced and then looking up other reviews online. So that's it. I just think that they're awful, and I don't want us to spend $11 on them, much less $11,000. And that's all.
I believe the academic committee met on this and had presentations. Does anyone have any questions of the academic, I mean, the people that made the presentations? I know Ms. LeBrecht, you were there, correct?
I was, yes. So one of the things, as far as some of the concerns, I know that we discussed with regards to the Newsy LA, is that there were further filters that we could put on that so that we could make sure that we could monitor different content that's coming through so that it could be a little bit more two-sided discussion and that sort of thing. Dr. Winborn, do you want to speak to some of that a little bit?
Yes, ma'am, I'm happy to. You are correct. The representatives from the vendors zoomed in virtually to share some information. They had a presentation. And they did share that we have additional control in setting the parameters for the topics and the sources of these nonfiction pieces. As I certainly understand your perspective, we did have a middle school principal in attendance at the committee, and she advocated strongly that we continue to keep this. One of the concerns we have is if we do not purchase this and provide this for our teachers, then they will simply go and, you know, search the internet and find resources that haven't been vetted at all. So this is an alternative, a library or a collection of news articles that have been vetted by what they purport to be a middle-of-the-road bias. That was the way they described it themselves. And then, of course, the principal and the teacher have that additional layer. Mr. Perry's team can even go in and change the settings to further kind of restrict the topics. But the principal did share that many of the times, these are very benign topics, things about hurricanes or, you know, animals that are going extinct in the jungle and things like that. They are nonfiction pieces. They're not always about current events or generally don't stray into topics that are controversial. But again, your point is well-received. And I think Mr. Perry and his team still would like to move forward with this purchase.
So my, so, yes, I mean, originally, I was concerned about the content of Newsy LA, but it's even more than that. I mean, speaking from personal experience, having tried to help a seventh grader and myself having been college-educated and not being able to come to a correct answer together, you know, that troubles me. So I guess what this boils down to is like, how many people have actually used this that are recommending to use it other than the people that are trying to sell it to us? Because of course, the vendors are going to say how great it is because they make commission off of selling it. So, and it's not that I'm trying to make our teachers' job harder. I realize that they have to have curriculum and content, and I appreciate that. But I want that curriculum and content to be productive for our students, especially being in the position that we're in right now.
Correct. And this is.
Ms. Perry, how long have they used it at the two middle schools?
I know one of the middle schools where the principal was representative, that has been used at least the last two years. Actually, she attributed that to the strong gangs they made in reading the previous two years.
Newsy LA?
Yes.
Or IXL?
Newsy LA. Because definitely with the social studies, using mythology, using those texts to go back and synthesize and analyze those texts to help build their nonfiction abilities, reading abilities.
Excuse me, how many teachers do we know that uses, use this?
It's available to all of the teachers at these two schools. I know that the principal, Principal Clark, Ashley Clark at Buttersen Middle School, shared that it's primarily the social studies and English Language Arts teachers that are using it.
But it can be used for all.
Science teacher could use it.
And health teacher.
And like, it has been used at other schools, obviously, because.
Correct. Yeah, absolutely. That was just the only representative that was at the meeting.
Well, my concern would be how many teachers are using it and the effectiveness of it. And I don't know if we have that information or can even get it. But if it's a benefit to, I don't know how many we would consider it beneficial to, but I would like to know. I'd like to have some more information about what it's doing and how well it's doing and what it's supposed to do.
I mean, did anybody go, did anybody go look at reviews after our last conversation?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, I did as well.
Did you find anything concerning?
No.
I don't mean from like the Newsy LA website.
No, I will. A big Google searches and things of that nature.
Are there other options? I mean, I heard the discussion about this here. Are there other options that we could further choose?
Yes, I mean, we, there is material in our core curriculum, okay? But I think one of the challenges here, and the reason the principals are advocating for this, is because they would like to have a resource that they know their teachers can go to and identify quickly. Again, the concern is that if we don't provide this, teachers will just go out and, without any sort of guidance, select items for instruction, passages, nonfiction. And, you know, that may be well, it may be good. I'm sure that, you know, we rely on teachers' professional judgment all the time to make those decisions. But the thinking is that this would be a quality item that, again, we can differentiate based on a student's reading level. And board members, I might add, just for a point of clarification, we're not actually asking for your approval or purchase this item. It's to designate it as a sole source vendor because we're using federal funds to purchase it. It's actually a rather small purchase. And this is something that an individual principal could decide on their own, without even consulting me, to purchase for their teachers. And so I just, I just wanted to clarify that. Teachers could go and purchase their own subscriptions to this as well. And some teachers do. Go out and, you know, buy subscriptions to individual items.
Is it state with the approval of the social studies curriculum out now? Is that just sort of on hold?
Ms. Williams, I don't know the latest status. I know that we have not focused a lot of attention on that lately. But I can get that information for you.
But it's not been released or approved yet?
I would have to check on that. I have not looked recently. But I can find that out.
And I do know that that's something else that we've talked about with reference to the Newsy LA and the IXL and stuff, is that we are, right, Dr. Winborn, looking into any redundancies that we have to see if, you know what I mean? We're using everything that we have to the fullest as far as our core curriculum and that sort of thing to make sure that we're not spending money unnecessarily.
Correct, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. LeBrecht, for that because I certainly don't want to spend a penny purchasing something if we already have the resources that can accomplish the same thing. Because we do spend a lot of money on our core curriculum, and it's pretty comprehensive. So, and that's something I know that Mr. Perry and his team are looking into.
So do you have any idea, Mr. Perry, if IXL will be used exclusively in the classroom or will it be given for homework?
That's at the discretion of the school.
Because that's, I think that's where my biggest problem is with IXL, is that when, is, the explanations are terrible. When they get a question wrong, a lot of times, the explanation for why they got a math question wrong doesn't really explain to them how to fix it or what to do right next time. And so it makes me uncomfortable to send this home as a homework resource when they don't have any way to understand what they did wrong or how to fix it next time. And especially when, again, they lose points. The more questions they answer incorrectly, I can see where this would be extremely frustrating and not a productive resource for homework assignments. And so if it's only given in the classroom as a way for the teachers to kind of be there and be able to answer questions and direct the kids as to what they need to do differently, then I could, I could sort of, I could sort of agree to it. But, but not if the kids are left alone on their own to do this.
This is actually to be used as a supplemental to the HMH core curriculum that we currently have. It's just kind of backfill gaps for students.
I know, but I've seen it given as homework. And it's, and it's on a computer. Again, it's another thing that like, there's no, it's not like giving them a worksheet to take home. There's no way to check and see what, where they went wrong. It doesn't, it doesn't give the teachers that opportunity. Whereas like, if they were doing it on paper, you could clearly see, oh, they missed a step or they, you know, they added where they were supposed to subtract or something like that. But it doesn't, it doesn't provide that sort of information. So I worry about the kids being able to figure out, if they're lost on something, how are they gonna, how are they gonna realize what they're supposed to be doing?
I understand.
And you guys are free to do what you want. I just have voiced my opinion now, so.
Do you give guidance to the schools on how it's used as far as homework?
For IXL.
Do you have that ability to do that, or is that a principal's decision?
That is a principal's decision, or a school's decision. We've been working with another program as where we are, instead of looking at the number of minutes spent, but actually the number of lessons completed. We use that for another alternative supplemental program that we offer here in the district.
Okay, so, just, I'll just move on. 4.09, my only, my only question was, is somebody gonna review the book list before we send them out?
Absolutely.
Yes.
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 That's it?
Yes.
Triple check.
As long as you promise that you are.
Yes, our coaches and our district staff have been, will review those titles before they are purchased.
Okay, all right.
And thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome. And then 4.11 for the laptop refresh. And I'm fine with this. It's just that it says for one-to-one ratio for third, sixth, and ninth graders. So I was under the impression that we were moving towards not having one-to-one ratio starting in third grade, that it was possibly going to be moved to fourth. Of course, I'm not on the academic committee. But that we were talking about maybe not giving kindergartners first, second, and third graders laptops to take home in the future.
I know that conversation kind of steered toward the K2. I don't remember the third, I apologize for that. But trying to phase out the K2 and just the end of life, once the end of life is done on those K2 devices, that would be it.
Okay.
So no refresh there.
Okay, but sticking with the one-to-one in third grade?
Yes, three, six, and nine.
Okay.
And I think if I'm interrupt, just, and part of the rationale for that is that's when they begin testing in third grade, and they'll have to do it online, so.
And this.
But definitely phasing out K1, 2.
Right.
Yes.
And just to double check on understanding this for next year. So as of right now, our middle school, and maybe this is directed toward technology, I'm not sure. As of right now, we have the two-to-one ratio available for middle schoolers, and we're gonna phase that out too, correct? No? Okay. I mean, I know that was grant-funded, not, so, okay. I just wanted to double check, thank you. Okay.
Going back to the sole source vendor, is that, those are subscriptions, is that for a year?
Yes.
Yes.
So if we find that there are issues?
Yes.
We don't renew? See, we're not obligated for longer than that?
Just a comment I would like to add. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I've been listening to all the conversations. And, you know, I, and I know that it was stated that, you know, we leave that up to the principals at the schools with regards to that. And, you know, we, my thought process or question is, I wonder if other parents are feeling the same way as what we have heard? Or they're not saying anything? Or would the principals or teachers, you know, keep record if they are getting other questions and some other parents are saying some of the same or forcing some of the same concerns as we just heard? That would be interesting to know if the principal, in fact, are getting other things, such as the. principal in fact are getting other things such as this. Would the principals be bringing that back, you know, yes, they get concerns raised by other parents, if any?
Ms. Anderson, this is Stan. I'm happy to work with Mr. Perry. I think what we're hearing here, and I really, I welcome this discussion. I'm very glad that we are scrutinizing what we teach our students. I think it is very, very important, and I think consistency across our school district is also very important.
Yes.
And so we can certainly gather some additional effort. To Mr. Peace's point about the effectiveness of this, of these resources, is it truly making a difference? Are parents like Ms. Hayes having problems? You know, is this a common issue? So we can certainly dig deeper into this, but based on the recommendations of the team so far, I'm, I'm still bringing this board as a recommendation. But I think we could do, we could gather more data to help you make a more informed decision.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve 4.09 and 4.11. Second.
Motion's made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. So...
Are we going to get some more information on seven and eight as to, you know, because I would like to know how many people, how many teachers are using it really and if it's effective, which shouldn't be, shouldn't require a lot of hard work and time to get that information, I wouldn't think.
Are you referring to four eight, 4.09, and 4.10?
No, I'm referring to four seven, four eight only.
Mr. Peace, I can ask, with 408, there are six other schools that are using the same software program.
Six schools?
Yes, yes, sir. They have active licenses.
And my question would be, how effective is it?
That I don't need to determine.
Pardon?
That requires a little bit more legwork.
Okay, thank you.
We'll look into that.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing for me with 407 and 408 is that, if there are other alternatives, but I mean, I understand the point of not wanting to leave teachers up to, hey, we're just gonna use Google and, and find whatever sources that aren't vetted and, you know, who knows what they pick up on their own. And so I think, you know, if there truly aren't any other options, I would rather have, I would rather have teachers have some kind of vetted option as, you know, than no vetted option, so.
Going back to, maybe I'm bringing up something that, not maybe is relevant, but when we think about the Parents Bill of Rights and parents knowing the materials that their children are using in school, how will this play into that? How do we do that?
Well, and not defer to Ms. Dibis on some of this, but there is already a board policy in place which allows full transparent access to all of our curriculum materials, regardless of what the Parents Bill of Rights says. And that, the Parents Bill of Rights, in my understanding, is that it doesn't speak directly to curriculum, more so as some sensitive topics, and the sharing of, or the gathering of information from students.
Yeah, right.
You may want to correct me, but that's my...
Well, it does address parents being able to request to see material that their children are reading, which can be done through these programs by allowing...
But don't we also have a general policy that just allows that across the board as well? Inspection of all curriculum, yeah. I mean, we're, to answer your question, we're an open book. I mean, whatever is being taught, our parents...
They have that opportunity to...
Absolutely.
To look at, the parent as well.
So, I mean, I'm fine with whatever, you know, the board decides to do. I mean, I'm gonna be a no vote, but I want to challenge everybody around this table. I mean, I challenge you to go into one of our, one of our classrooms with our kids and go sit beside one of these struggling kids and watch them, and watch them use these. Sit right beside them and watch them use IXL when they can't ask the teacher for help. And, and see, see what happens. And some kids are probably gonna do okay, and that's great, but if you haven't sat beside a kid that doesn't have somebody right beside them that can tell them how to figure out the right answer, then you cannot understand what you are asking these kids to do, if it's gonna be used outside the classroom. So, that's all.
Some of the opinion right now is that we need to maybe take these individually. We've already passed nine of them.
All I've done is add some more information. And, I mean, it's, I don't think this has to be decided tonight, but does it?
Well, the only, there is a, an issue of inconvenience because the current subscriptions will expire mid-month, and so I know that the principals were hoping to have these renewed. But again, we, what, we'll serve at your pleasure, do whatever.
Is that not item 407?
For both of those, yes, ma'am. 407 and 408. I think they're both, is that correct, Mr. Perry, they're about to expire? It's an odd cycle. For some reason, they're not, they do not coincide with the academic year, which is inconvenient.
How about if we, since we, you know, the expiration is coming up, if we do decide to let these renew, we can have that based on a condition that a review will be made as to the student's ability to understand this, and just like it was said earlier, let someone, you know, let someone sit there with the student and see if they understand. Under those conditions, we keep this to ensure that it's doing what it needs to do for our students, under these conditions only. I mean, and if we find out that things are lacking, then we have to make that, you know, improvement and make it work. If we're gonna keep this and find out that it's not, you know, it's not doing what the students want, what the student needs, basically, which is what I heard earlier, that they do not understand it. Does the teacher understand it? Does the principal? Can they sit there and listen at them or get, you know, questioned to the parents? You know, is your child understanding this when it comes, she uses it or he uses it as a supplement? So under those conditions, that we ensure that this tool is effective for our students.
Is it being used for homework now?
Apparently it is. I can't answer that for all the schools, but it sounds like in the case with Mrs. Hayes' student, it is being used.
I'm just gonna make an observation, personal experience. I've had a parent call me, fourth grade math, the way it's done now. I'm not sure the parents can be that helpful in most cases, so that would be a concern to me. You know, we need to see what, we have a motion. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve, four seven and eight.
Do we have a second? Okay.
I would say that I've heard the motion and I am in agreement with it, under the conditions that when we do get this tool again, that there will be further look into this to see if in fact the students are getting effective use out of it. If the parents doesn't know, just like what you said with regards to some parents saying, I don't know how that thing works either, you know, how can I help them if I don't understand? So who's the one that would really be helping the student to effectively use the tool?
Well, if the motion is approved, I've already asked for them to find out the effectiveness of it.
Okay, so under the conditions that we find out the effectiveness of it, or do we just approve the motion to purchase it and then make another, you know, lay out another strategy? I'm sorry, which one?
Mr. Peace, were you amending your motion or would you like that raised as a separate issue?
Well, I would like to raise this, I mean, I had raised it earlier, and as he said, he could do it, so I didn't think, I needed it in the motion if it passes. If it don't pass, we don't, we don't care about whether it's effective or not.
Okay. So Ms. Anderson, does that make sense to you?
Yes, that's, yes, that's fine. We'll put this other condition on the, yeah, separately. Yes, yes, I'm good.
Do we have to put a condition on it or can we make a suggestion?
No, no, we don't have to put one down, but that will be another...
I think we can handle that part as a suggestion to our administration to monitor it, and we can monitor it with them for that matter, kind of see how it's going.
Okay, okay, and I, so I second the motion put on the table.
Okay, it's time to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 We might need to roll call this. Ms. Hayes?
No.
Mr. Peace?
Yes.
Ms. Lancy?
Yes.
Ms. LeBret?
No.
And Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, so... The motion passes for those, and I'm sure our administration will take in consideration concerns that we have tonight and monitor carefully.
We certainly will, Ms. Williams. Thank you.
Okay, and, and just a little to that, you said, yeah, I am sure the administrative team will do that and monitor, and when do we get, well, I know it has, you have to lay out a plan of action as far as getting feedback from, you know, the principals, teachers, or whatever, on this tool, you know, we definitely want to just make sure we do.
Are we including 410 in that motion? Make sure.
We had already approved...
We've got that one, okay. Great. And laptop refresh, we've already gotten. Field trip approval.
That was in the first.
Okay, that's in the first one too.
So I think we're covered with all that.
So we've finished all those. Okay, great. All right, the next item is academic success. The other one is academic updates.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Perry and some of his team members are gonna be sharing some information tonight, updates on our English as a Second Language program, Student Services, our summer programs, and remediation opportunities. And then Ms. Amy Rice is gonna share some information about year-over-year academic recovery, and that was something that was shared in our academic committee meeting. So a lot of, a lot of information tonight. Mr. Perry's been busy.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the rich conversation regarding the last two products, and really do appreciate your feedback, and we'll govern ourselves accordingly to make sure we monitor and evaluate those software programs moving forward. Tonight, as Dr. Winborn mentioned, we do have a couple of academic updates to share with you tonight, and as you see on our screen, our March topics with ESL and Student Services all come on up. We're gonna save the year-over-year analysis for very last, because that's probably gonna generate quite a bit of discussion, and it's quite a, quite a lengthy presentation as well. But Mrs. Rice will also share information with you regarding summer program remediation activities regarding testing at the end of the school year. So, team, would you come right up and share your information?
Good evening, everyone. So I would like to share news as far as for the ESL department. You can go to the next slide, thank you. I would like to first say that we are fully staffed. We have six teachers for ESL, so we have, yes, teachers certified to be at all of our schools. Just to break down the numbers, just to let you see, our elementary schools, we have 377 students that are identified, middle schools, 163 students, in high schools, we have 177 students. And on the next slide, this is our information that we house in our elevation platform where we keep all of our information for our students, our ESL students. So as you can see, we have over 717 students that are identified in our district. And at the bottom, you can see the graph, and you can see, you can't really see it in detail, but it's by schools, so you could just see how it varies from school to school on the graph. And then as far as our students that we monitor, we have 88 students that we just monitor and keep up with, who are right close to passing. And then as far as for our languages, we have 955 students that are identified for Spanish and 4,483 students in our district that are for English. And so right now, we're in the part of doing our RITA testing, where we are doing our testing. It's in four different parts, where we're doing the reading, speaking, listening, and writing, and we will soon find out how our students perform and how many of our students exited from the program. Good evening, Madam Chair Williams, board members, Dr. Winborn, and the executive team. We wanted to give you a snapshot of our Student and Family Services department. So here we have listed, just highlighted some of the key responsibilities of the individuals in our department. It includes our college advisors, our new position of our District Attendance Specialist, McKinney-Vento Liaison, which serves our unaccompanied youth and families in transition. Many of you might refer to this as homeless, our school counselors, our school nurses, and our school social workers. So I won't read over all of those points, but that just kind of highlights some of the main work that they do. And here, I just wanted to give you kind of a snapshot of the services, of how we are connecting and supporting our students and families in the district. And so this is a reflection of services, January, actually moving into February also, with 23 school counselors. You look at the number of classroom and instruction, so that would be any time our school counselors are going into the classrooms and given a form of lesson, and that could be at the elementary, middle, or high. Our number of counseling services, whether that be individual or small groups, referrals and consultations, that would be anything that involves, whether it be internal meetings with parents, or whether it be consulting with agencies outside of the district. Our school social workers, we currently have four school social workers, and so I wanted to kind of list for you our number of home visits, outreach services, again, referrals and consultations. Let me just say, their numbers are a little low in that area because they are spread out across the district. So it's not that they are not putting in the work and hitting the pavement, but we're sharing them with all of our school sites as opposed to school counselors being at their sites. They can participate in more meetings at their sites. Again, with their intervention teams, I came to you last year and we kind of revamped some things in Student and Family Services where we have student services teams, where we're asking members of our department along with administration to meet at least twice a month to discuss issues of behavior, academic concerns. So that's where you see the intervention teams. We currently have four school nurses, and our school nurses, again, like our social workers, are spread throughout the district, and so they are servicing all of our students. McKinney-Vento, to date, we have 131 students identified. With our District Attendance Specialists, we have been working with families with excessive absences, and we have a process in place where when we have students that have excessive absences, the schools are having attendance meetings with those families. When we're not seeing improvement, it elevates to the district level. And so since January, we've met with 16 parent guardians, families in regards to excessive absences with attendance. And then, of course, we have our three advisors, college advisors, that are in partnerships with our three traditional high schools.
Dr. Northfleet, may I ask one quick question if you'll, regarding attendance?
Yes.
What is the step following the district parent meetings? If you could explain that to the board for their information?
So what, when we have that district attendance meeting with the parent or guardian... So what, when we have that district attendance meeting with the parent or guardian, that's an opportunity for us to kind of share with the parents all of the information that we have in attempts that have been made to support the student and family in getting them to school, and not just getting them to school, but getting them to school on time. And we also use that opportunity to kind of help the parent and the student make connections, clear connections between the importance of them being in school and them learning. We look for additional strategies. We also give the families an opportunity to share input as to, okay, what are they seeing as their barriers to getting the student to school? After there's dialogue between the team members and the parent, we then deliberate and we say, okay, do we have enough information to determine whether or not there has been an over effort? And we want to make sure that we go above and beyond in providing support and we're still not seeing any improvement? Or have we seen slight improvement and we need to make more adjustments to support that student in getting to school? When we say we've kind of exhausted, and right now we've making sure that we still are holding the student and the parent accountable, we have made recommendations to the district attorney's office for student truancy. And there have been some follow-through when we say the district attorney's office as well as the court systems are supporting us in making sure that parents are held accountable for making, making students attend school.
Dr. North, what are some of the barriers that you are hearing why kids not come to school?
Could you, I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
What are some of the barriers that you are hearing why kids not attend school on a regular basis?
Transportation comes up, and so we have, and this has been a great opportunity for us to collaborate with transportation department, and, and we, we find out, you know, bus routes, if we need to make suggestions or recommendations about possibly other means of transportation. And then we just have some students that just say they don't want to come to school. And so that's where our dialogue really goes into helping them make the connections between education, the importance, discipline also, and, you know, post-secondary options for you, whether it be, you know, attending a two- or four-year college, whether it be working in the community, or be, you know, enrolling in the military. So we kind of make that connection. I have a platform, and I say that, you know, we want to make sure that we are presenting an environment for our students that we want them to have a fear of missing out. So we do talk about, you know, building a sense of community and culture that's inviting for students, and even when students may be struggling. But in that process, we still talk a lot about accountability.
Um, I just want to make sure that, for school counselors, so we have two at every high school, correct?
Correct.
And do we have two at every middle school as well?
Correct.
Okay, and then one at elementary. Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure I had that right.
Yes.
So could you talk a little bit about what, what are student cases for the college advisors? What does that kind of entail?
So that is working with students that have, have made a plan that they are interested in attending a two- or four-year college. So they help them through the whole college application, selection process, financial aid. FAFSA is happening now, so many of our college advisors are working with small groups as well as individual students and helping them and their families complete the FAFSA.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just one clarification, Granville Early College has one counselor.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
And Phoenix Academy has one counselor, and Granville Academy has one counselor.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Winborn. Okay. Next slide, please. So, again, where we look at attendance, many of the supports fall in the area of Student and Family Services. This is month six when we look at our principal's monthly report, and we are glad to say that we are, we're increasing our attendance across the district. So here we have elementary, middle, and high have had a slight raise, and so of course that has impacted the district, and this month we're at 94.87%. So we're climbing, we're climbing. Next slide, please. And as we're around the district in many of our buildings, and I've talked with you in previous months about how our schools are actually supporting and promoting attendance, and so just took a couple of snapshots of bulletin boards and signs that we're seeing around the school that are recognizing and incentivizing schools and classrooms when it comes to monthly attendance. So here, we wanted to kind of give you that, that snapshot again of how we are increasing from month one all the way up to month six. So our district goal, again, is 96.5, so we're right there. So I keep saying to the principals, I mean, they're, they're doing some great work, so we wanted to give you that snapshot as well. So here, we kind of wanted to break the data down a little bit more and really show you excused and unexcused. So the arrows, the up and down arrows that you see, they're in comparison to month five. And so you can see where elementary overall, the amount of absences are decreasing. So when we look at the number of excused and unexcused absences compared to last month, they're down, which is, which is really good. Our middle school, the excused is up, and again, remember when we're talking about excuse, there's some form of documentation to support a legitimate reason for not being in school. Okay? And the same would occur when we look at our high school. Any questions? All right, next slide, please. Now we're looking at behavior again, and I'm glad to continue to say that we continue to see a degree, a decrease in our behavior concerns across the district. We have a comparison from this time last year, February 2023 to 2024, and our rates overall for total office referrals are about 100 less than they were the previous year, and our suspensions are not quite 200 less than the previous year. Are there any questions?
So that data's put into a system as the report comes to the office, right?
Yes.
So they can't, they can't decide not to put it in?
I can't say that. I want this kid to go to, tell him out, some office, not put the report in. This is manually done by the principal?
Any infraction that is going to cause for some form of discipline has to be entered into our data system, and that data system is educators handbook.
I, I just want to thank you guys for all that you're doing. Headed in the right direction. We keep it going that way, we'd be good.
Thank you, thank you. And again, a big shout out to our principals, they're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So next up, we have 2023-2024 summer programs. Ms. Rice will provide more information.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, executive team. This one's easy. We do this every year. So this is the summer programs and readministration opportunities. So this is at the end of the year, we have students who may not have tested their best on the EOG for nerves, for whatever reasons, and they just need a little second try. And so the state provides that opportunity that if students come in for remediation after the school year has ended for students, that is, we start remediating as soon as we get those scores back. But we do have to go into the summer to at least remediate, and then we can readminister these students the test. So because of staffing, we do this, that first week we are out of school and we have staff and teachers still in the building, they begin the remediation process as soon as scores come back. We remediate on that Monday, that is a teacher workday, and then those students who would like to have an opportunity to have that test readministered may do so. Any questions? It's pretty simple. It does count for the school and the student for proficiency. Growth, however, students' growth for the school and for the student is measured by the first test. But if they do move to proficiency, and we had quite a few students move from non-proficient to proficient last year with this readministration opportunity. It is an action item, so it would take your board approval. There's our proposed end-of-year testing calendar. For elementary schools, it's the last 10 days of the year. We have to test within the last 10 days of the year. And for high schools, it's the last five days of the year. So it's pretty set.
You need a motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion for you.
Thank you, sir.
Grab a second.
I second.
Okay. Ms. Lancy, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
What?
Did I hear Ms. LeBret?
Yeah, sorry, I had another one chime in with me. Yes.
The motion carries and it's approved. Thank you, Ms. Rice.
Thank you. I think I'm next up, too. So everybody take a deep breath with this one, this is not as easy. So we, I reviewed with the academic committee the year-over-year trends in achievement before, during, and after the pandemic. I did not do this data analysis. The state and SAS are kind enough to do this for us and then provide it to all districts in the state, and they also give us state data. And the purpose is to see, where were we headed before the pandemic based on a trend? What happened during the pandemic, and how have we been recovering in the last two years since? So we have some nifty charts for you to look at, but there's a lot of them, and I'm not going to go over every single grade level. I'd rather just sort of just define what each chart is showing, and then let you look at them at your leisure and get into depth about them. But just know that on these charts, there's two thresholds that we use for comparison. The first is the pre-pandemic trend, and when we get to a chart, I'll show you the color in a second. But that is long-term trend. What was the trajectory of our students by grade level and content based on data from 2013 to 2019? And so you'll see that for both us and the state. And then you see a three-year average, sort of like saying, well, where were we right before the pandemic? You know, what were we looking at that? Because it's, it's a big difference. So we have a trend, and then we have a three-year average. Those are what we're looking at. Three metrics are included. The pre-pandemic trend, which is, again, I just said, is from 2013 to 19. The pandemic impact, you will see it, bing, it's a big plunge. You'll see that in the chart, except in English II, it's really an anomaly. And then distance to full recovery is where are we headed back to get to that original trend? Okay? So here's an example. We have the, every, every content area has this included, so there's the graph. Hold still, there we go. All right, so our is for the district, it's that kind of dark purple that we have, and so you will see, there's our trend line, if you, this is an example, this is not our district. There's the trend line, and then you see when we get to that 2019, the dash is if we were based on that trend, where was the district headed? And so you can see, based on 2013 to 19 and following that trend, this district was headed up for their EOG math grade six. Then that dash blue line is, well, what was the three-year average right before the pandemic? What was the average? And then you follow the non-dash line to see what happened during the pandemic. Again, there's the plunge. And so then we're looking at those two dots after the plunge to see how are we doing towards recovery? We want to see those dots get closer and closer to what that original trend line was. And so in the gray for each chart is going to be the state. And I'll go ahead and tell you, we'll not keep it in secret. Ours is reversed for this. You will see that Granville County typically performs below what is the state average. Our trends, however, match pretty much in sync everything that has happened in the state as well. So I'll show you an example. That just, you can keep going. We'll get to one that's ours. So the questions to think about when you're looking through this, during the pre-pandemic long-term and short-term trends, was achievement increasing, decreasing, or holding steady? You know, I could tell you that, you can see that, you know, if you look through our charts and graphs, you're going to see that for our math, most of our math, we were showing our trend as increasing. We were on the upward path. That was the same for the state. However, when you get to reading, our trend was not always increasing across the grade levels, and neither was it for the state. There was a downward trend based on that long-term trend data. What was the average magnitude of the pandemic? I can tell you that math had the largest magnitude. Our average drop in all of our grade levels for math was a negative 5.2. The average reading drop, to give you comparison, was negative 1.7. So that's overall average. And science was right in between at a negative 3.9. So our math, which we already knew pretty much the pandemic took a greater toll on math with our students than it did with reading. Yes, sir?
Also, I want to interject here, we also have to remember that we were struggling with our number of vacancies in mathematics classes, particularly in middle school and high school. So that does have an impact on the data that you'll see as well.
So other questions to look at, what, which assessment had the largest negative impact, the smallest? The English II had the least negative impact, third-grade math had the greatest? They did, they did better. It was very odd. How do our results compare to the state's? Very similar. The trends are about the same. We were not statistically different with the state's data except in one grade level and subject. And for each assessment, how does the magnitude of the pandemic impact compare to the remaining impact? So we're just looking, are we, are we headed back in the right direction? Next slide. So you would click on this report, and then it shows you, I think I made it available to all. There it is. So this is Granville County Schools data, and you will also see the state data here for the average. It's a long report, so we're not going to go over it in each grade level, by grade level. But if you'll just go back to the slides that I gave you, the legend will show you which each line shows in this. But if you'll just go to that third-grade math, just keep scrolling, scroll, lovely. Keep going. Keep going. Right there. So this is our data. And so this shows you, I already told you that third-grade math, this was one of our grade levels that, you know, was significantly impacted. So you can see that deep dive down, but you can see that we are making gains back towards where we want to be. So remember, the blue dash line is the three-year average. Can we get back to where we were right before the pandemic? But then that purple line that's dashed, that was where our trajectory was headed based on 10 years' worth of data. And so we are trying our best. And then you look at the gaps. We're still below the state average, the state's still below where it was, and it has not regained to where it was pre-pandemic. Any questions?
I find it very interesting that, that dip in 2014, wasn't Common Core math implemented in 2012, 2013?
It was. But that, that dip, but you also see, like, but we were on a trajectory up.
Right, until Common Core math was implemented, and then the year after.
No, 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 no. The dip is, the dip is COVID.
No, no, no. Look at 2014, the dot, the district average scale score. I'm not looking at the trend, I'm looking at the dot that's below the trend.
Right, and then went back, yeah. Took a year to adjust.
Yeah.
Took a year to adjust. But then it's back into the trajectory.
Right.
And there will be, for all things, dips and highs and lows, because remember, these data points, just keep in mind, these data points are also different students. So we're not looking at a cohort of students either, which is what I love to look at, you know? How did these third graders do when they got to the fourth grade, and to the fifth grade, and to the sixth grade? But when we're looking at these individual dots, you're thinking about this year's third graders, next year's third graders, the next year's third graders. So they're all different, so, but you'll see some, and that's why the trend data is, can you draw a line and touch as many dots as possible? And that's how you get what your trend would be. If you look at the reading, the reading in, across the state and across, is a downward trend for that long-term. is a downward trend for that long-term trend line as well. So it's just, it's quite interesting, you know. I have no guesses as to why. Yes, sir?
Ms. Rice, I wanted to mention, to your point, Ms. Hayes, I think you can identify other external changes that are reflected in some of these graphs. For example, when the state changed the requirements about eighth-grade students taking Math 1, and whether or not those scores counted again.
Correct.
That impacted, yeah.
A dip.
And when standards were adopted, when the tests were re-normed. So there are some other things that factor into this. So that's a good, good observation there. It's not, and it's not, it's not straightforward personally.
But it does give us a big picture of, you know, did we have cohorts? Because I would not, at this point, say we had a grade level that suffered. Because at this point, we're looking at a cohort. This third-grade group of students was significantly impacted in their math. And so we need to know, what group is that now? And are they trending in the right direction and moving back? So that that's how we move those gains up.
They're in seventh grade now.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's my son.
Yep.
On that graph.
Yep.
Amy, can the teacher pull the, their data when they, if EVOS data received those scores, and they get the right score? Can they pull that when they get the kids' names in the office? Can they pull the data and see what the kids?
They can pull for students in their classroom. It takes till about October for that EVOS data to dump so that teachers can see the same very similar charts and graphs per student. And so they get that release to them with the students that are in their class. It's usually late October that they get those. But it looks exactly like this, except it's based on per student.
Reminder, people, please speak into your microphones so that they will pick it up.
Thank you, I will.
So do you think that this was the most significant dip that we saw out of, of all the cohorts?
Third-grade math?
Yeah.
Yes, I know that.
Yeah.
I mean, for, for our data, third-grade math. It was also for the state. And that could be, for, again, it may not, first year taking an EOG also, you know, that it's, it's that. So it could be a lot of those factors of test-taking skills. Did we get the practice? Those sort of things. Because again, the group that had the least impact is English 2 across the state and in our district. They did very well. They just read at home because they were at home.
So where did this data come from? Because our kids didn't take EOGs that year.
So, so you'll see, you don't see a dot in 2020.
Right.
There's no dot. So the dip down is 2021, when we did. So there's no dot for 2020 because we didn't have data. So it's just following the trajectory through 2020.
Oh, they just pretended like they had data for 2020.
Pretended, yeah. It's just saying, if this were the trajectory, correct.
The state, obviously, not.
Got you. So no dot, nothing. That just keeps it on the trajectory. And then you just see the dip. Any other questions?
Did one year the state, then, then, guess what? Campus scores after pandemic? One year they, I read something about that. One year they, the scores were not counted, or they were not tested.
So in 20, so in 2020, there was no test. And in 2021, we have scores, but it was not used to give grades to schools, performance grades, any of that. And so in a lot, and let me just say, in 2021, Grahamville County Schools still tested 95% of its students. Even though the state wasn't counting it, you weren't going to be in trouble if you didn't meet your 95%. It wasn't going towards growth. There were a lot of schools that did not meet the 95% districts. But we still met our 95%. So we have accurate data on our 2021 group.
I want to say Beth was awesome. She went above and beyond that year to make sure that our students got tested.
We got them in.
She was amazing.
We sent the message that it was still required. And that was not the case, you know, across the state, you know. But all, we, we met 95%. So that is accurate data of what our picture really looked like in 2021. Anything else? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Rice, I want to thank you for sharing this. You know, again, this is kind of just one other piece of the puzzle, of one lens we can look through. You mentioned our EVOS data. You can look at cohorts over time as well through that. It's, it, this paints a, not a pretty picture, though.
We have a lot of work to do.
Again, we have a lot of work to do. Some of these, I scrolled down to the middle grades math to Mr. Perry's point. We had a double dip. We went down, then we went up, and then we went down again.
Right. So one of our charts in there will show you the percentage of schools who made two years' increasing growth, and the percentage of schools that went up a year, down a year. And so, you know, we, we need to be up every year. There's work to be done. There's, there truly is.
And to Mr. Perry's point, a huge piece of that is getting a qualified teacher in that classroom. Exactly.
I think the thing that scares me the most about, about a graph like this is we had the dip. Everybody had the dip. But the fact that we're, we're now two years out and we're not even back to where we were in 2013. And we don't know how long that's going to take.
And, and like I said, and it, and sadly, it matches that across the state. The only place we are back to where we were is in biology. We met biology. I'll go ahead and tell you all, there's a new biology assessment coming out next year, so that will probably change. I'm just kidding. But we are, we had reached back to where we were with biology. And English 2 is hovering. But again, it's not where we wanted it to be even pre-pandemic.
All those wonderful dissections the kids are doing are going to help with that.
Yeah.
So it's going to drive those biology scores right up.
It is. But anytime we have a new assessment, trend will show you that anytime there's a new assessment, there's usually a dip across the state there as well. But no, we're not where we were in any of our grade levels, except for the biology. All right. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation for this evening. Thank you, board members.
Thank you so much for the information. Next up is fiscal responsibility.
Good evening, board members. We're going to start our, our fiscal evening with a revisit of the supplemental funds for teacher compensation. This funding first came available in the 2122 school year by the state. And again, this is a supplement to our local supplement. This is, this funding is offered to low-wealth counties, those counties who can, may not be fully funded by a supplement to be competitive with other counties. And when it first came out, we were not sure if it was going to be continuing. However, this is year three of receiving this funding. And this is just a reminder of all of the strings that are tied to this, this funding. This is intended for teachers only, classroom-based teachers. Only principals and assistant principals can receive it if they're paying, if they're being paid on the teacher scale. Next slide, please. And we have two current assistant principals who are eligible for this funding. Next slide, please. The funding is recurring, but it may vary from year to year. And, and this is important because there's, you know, as, I'm going to talk ahead a little bit. You know, we've been talking a lot about wanting to increase our local supplement for teachers. However, this is not a consistent source of funding and not a consistent amount of funding. So it would be very difficult to say, well, this is what we're going to use to supplement our, 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 our local supplement. It's also very important that we cannot use this funding to supplant our local funding for our, our supplement. And districts have been hit heavily for that this past year. So we have to be very careful that we do not supplant our existing supplement. For the past two years, we have done it as, we've paid it as a one-time payment right around this time of year. This funding does not, it only pays K through 12 teachers. So pre-K teachers are not eligible for this funding. For the past two years, we have paid pre-K teachers from, out of fund aid. Actually, the first year, we paid it out of ESAR funds. Last year, we paid it out of our fund aid, our other restricted grants. And that's just to kind of let you know what historically we've done for this funding. Next slide, please. This year, you can see what our total allotment is. One, just under, over 1.1 million. We have approximately 469 teachers who are affected, who are eligible for this supplement. And if we divide that equally, that would be approximately $1,856 per teacher. And of course, the cost for those pre-K teachers would be approximately $27,000. Next slide, please. And this comes to you as a recommendation. I recommend that you approve this to be paid with March payroll and that we use fund eight dollars to, to pay the pre-K teacher supplements. Any questions?
Just a clarification. This particular fund goes to all school districts. It's not just something our.
Not all school districts. Anyone who receives low-wealth funding.
Low-wealth funding.
Correct. Correct.
But all the low-wealth counties get something?
Yes, yes. They receive some amount. It's, it's a formula based on the level of wealth, the county wealth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion's been made to approve the supplemental recommendation that Ms. Hines has brought to us. And it's been seconded and passed. So not passed yet, let's vote on it.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did I hear Ms. LeBrecht?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is our, our budget amendments for this period. Not as many this year, as the state has slowed down on their allotments. Let's see. Okay. So what you have before you is our state budget amendment. We are increasing our budget by 5,000. That is, we received a grant for feminine hygiene supplies in our schools, and we are adjusting the CTE budget. So that added $5,000 to our state budget. So our total amended budget is $54,744,746. Our local budget amendment, there was no change in, in the revenue there. It is simply a, an adjustment for Appreciation Weeks for counselors, social workers, and nurses, just an adjustment in their budget. And then finally, in the other restricted fund, we have an increase of $21,623. That is, we were adjusting budget for AED purchases, the county ABC funding, additional security at ballgames, and HR professional development. And we were also allocating a donation from the Grahamville Ed Foundation for the Spelling Bee, adding additional recycling revenue, and allocating one of the, the Get Outside grants. Any questions about those budget amendments?
Motion to approve the budget amendments, as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the budget amendments. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Start wherever you want. I'll follow you.
You get to stay up a long time tonight.
A long night. That one's fine. I'll follow you. First up, we have our monthly report on our usage of COVID funds. And again, this is ending, the period ending January 31st. You can see that we still have about just over $6 million remaining at this, at this period. Note the negative in that, in that PRC 206, the principal retention supplements. That's a correction that we have to make, so that's not, not a problem at all. But in the next, in the next month's review, you will see a huge decrease in our PRC 181, our main ESAR fund, as we paid out the local longevity in February. You'll see the, the standard report that, that we get from the state. And, and it's pretty much as, as you have seen it for the past several months. Most of our expenditures are, still remain to be in the salary and benefits area. Do you have any questions about the use of COVID funds? Thank you. We're going to move on to board travel. And again, this is as of January 31st. You will see that expenditures to that date total 6,751. You have a remaining balance of $641. Any questions about board travel at this time? And finally, you have our, our regular monthly budget review. Again, this is as of January 31st. By January 31st, we were 58% through the year, just to kind of give you a figure to, to go with there. You can see our local budget is right at about 59%. I like seeing that personnel and benefits are 50 to 55% because we have that local supplement that's paid out at the end of the year. So we want to make sure the funding is there for that. Our state budget is sitting right at 59% as well. And down to capital funds, that 2.5 million, just remember that 1.7 of that is the carryover funds for that 15 million that is specifically for HVAC and roofing. And, and two of the chillers, where you just approved the contract for that today. So, so that will be coming down as well. Any questions about the budget review in total? Okay. Moving on to our, the main event, the, our, our budget request for the county. As you well know, it is, it is budget season. And we have to present, this is a draft budget request for the county. And we're just going to walk through it. Many of the, much of this you have already seen. So it will just be kind of a rehash, but I believe it's, it's worth doing that. This budget request is going to be submitted to the county commissioners right after it is, is approved or held as needed. But you can see, just, you can scroll on to the next page. Again, we start with our current budget summary. This is a, just a letter of, about the budget by Dr. Wimbourn and Ms. Williams. And our current budget summary, you've seen this picture before. Forty-nine, this year, 49% of our state, of our funding is from the state. And once COVID funds expire next year, you will see that, that, that percentage is going to go back above 50% where it normally is. But our total budget for the current fiscal year is 110 million. And of course, scroll, scroll down. You can see that the county appropriations for the current year. Keep scrolling to the next page, right there. That's, again, our funding that we received them from the county for '23, '24, the current school year. I just want to point out, again, that that special projects HVAC. I just want to point out again that that special projects HVAC and roofing is that 1.7 million, that's part of ours. So that's not part of their appropriation, that's funding that we've already have hold, on hold with them. But again, that's the carryover from that original 15 million. Scroll down just a little bit, please. So when we look at our current, our operating budget, we consider our state, local, federal, non-COVID, and our other restricted funds as the operating budget. It doesn't include capital outlay, child nutrition funds, or community schools funding. So those, these budget funds make up approximately 88 and a half million dollars. And you can see that state, state is 61% of that. So it's quite a large part of our operating funds. So we always have to consider our state budget when we're considering our overall budget and our budget request to the county. Scroll down a little bit, please. This next area, you've seen this before as well, and in that, out of those operational funds, 76% are directed towards instructional services. That's when we talk about that, those 5,000 series. You've seen that other chart. That's where the vast majority of our funds are spent, and that's at the instructional level, as it should be. Then the next area is system-wide support of 18%. What's important to recognize, yes, that central office, but that's also maintenance, transportation, custodial, all of those areas, those large areas are considered in that, in that budget area as well. And our non-program charges are focused on our transfer out to charter schools. Scroll down just a little bit. By expenditure type, we're, again, we look at salaries and benefits being 71% of our overall operating budget, as one would expect in a school system. Keep scrolling, please. So our enrollment, we always, we have to look at enrollment, as much of our funding is allocated based on our enrollment. And if you look at that row of 2324, we were initially projected as with, and our budget was initially presented with 6,647 students. However, our actual best one-of-two ADM was 6,477. So our, we've already seen, and you've already approved those amendments, that reduction in funding, that we were reduced by 161 students overall. And for the past three years, it's been about a 3% decrease in students. We are hopeful. We've talked a lot about the state funding in arrears, using that model for our funding this current year. Found out recently that hasn't officially been approved yet, but we are still hopeful that that is going to be how we're funded for next year. So we are anticipating and planning forward with using that best one-of-two, 6,477 students as we plan for our staffing for next year. Scroll down just a little bit more. When we look at our own enrollment, it's important to also look at our overall Granville County student numbers that we support, because this funding that we request from the county doesn't only support Granville County schools' students, it supports all students who live in residing Granville County and attend either the district schools or charter schools. So total of all that have, all the students that have been reported to us, we have 8,602 students in Granville County that we are supporting, that our local funds are supporting this year, 25% in charter schools, 75% in Granville County. And we have to look at that, because when we have a need and we have a request that goes to the county, we have to increase our request because it, a portion of it has to go to the charter schools. Can you scroll down, please? And this year, because of how that breakdown is, if Granville, if Granville County needs $1, we need to request an additional 33 cents to account for those charter school students. And you'll see that in our requests later on in this document. Scroll down, please. I think it's important to pay attention to our local per pupil appropriation over time, because again, this is looking at all Granville County students. You can see back in 1819, our per pupil allocation was 1,747 per student. And this current year is $2,209 per student. On average, the increase over time has been on average 5.58%. So you can see that that line is the increase from the prior year. So some years, we've had a 9% increase, some years, we've had a 2.49 increase from the prior year. It just depends on the funding level received from the county that year. But on average, it's about 5.5% increase. Oh, the state budget estimate. The state is still currently working on their budget. And so we have no funding information yet. We are making some assumptions of our funding based on the funding in arrears model. However, we don't have that, those formulas yet from the state. So we are hoping to get those within the next couple of months. However, in our planning, we have in the budget information you'll see, we've been planning for that increase in salary and benefits of approximately 7%. And again, we've been using that planning ADM of 6,477. Okay? Yes, thank you. And of course, as we plan for our federal funding, we always have to keep in mind that those federal COVID dollars are going away September 2024. We are working with our program managers to decide what's important to keep and what's not important to keep. And those decisions are still being made. So that, those are still conversations that are being had as these funds are ending.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
To back up, I have a question about
Absolutely.
How much the state provides per child on the ADM. Are you assuming that it will be the exact same amount?
No, no, it varies from year to year.
So we really, even if we use the same numbers, we won't really know the exact amount?
Exactly. And that's, as I dig deeper, that's what becomes difficult. We have the same number of students, but in each, we've talked about the different pots of money and different formulas and how it's calculated. Those baseline numbers change every year. So, and that is what we don't know yet. It's a great question, though.
Thank you.
One would love it to be more, less complicated. And as we look at fund balance, we know that in the current budget, we have appropriated 2.1 million of fund balance, and that was to cover the decompression partnership, to cover recruitment and retention efforts, and that those are relocation and renovation costs. And that the Board of Education has also approved the additional 350,000 to support our classified staff in August as we shift their pay, pay schedule. This usage of fund balance would leave us with about 6.5%. That's $5.3 million in fund balance after June 30, 2024. We're in that little uncomfortable area for me, because you know, our auditors would like to see us at the 8%. 6.5 is still reasonable, but it is definitely something that we have to be careful about moving forward, because we want to be sure that we're in, we're in good shape. And finally, we move into the portion of the document that shares our actual budget request with the county. This is a summary chart of the requests that are being made, and then, but we'll go in into each of those a little bit in, more in depth. Next slide, next page, please. The first continuation, note that the request is separated into continuation requests, expansion requests, and then capital outlay is considered separately. The decompression is a continuation request. This is the third year of the prior commitment, the agreement that we came to with the county commissioners. So we are just simply asking for that final installment of that commitment. The total increase would be just under $500,000. That initial calculation was made with the charter school portion included. Next slide, please. You can keep going. The next continuation request is a salary and benefit increase for our locally funded positions. And again, this is a small portion of our overall salaries and benefits. However, it, you know, it does make an impact. Granville County schools would need approximately 651,000 to make that happen. Of course, you add the charter school portion, so the total increase request would be 865,830 for that continuation funding. Can scroll down? You can keep scrolling down just a little bit more. So that continuation request total a 2, excuse me, $2,583,000 increase. And that by itself is not insignificant.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
I know that you've helped me several times talking about these two items. This, right there, that doesn't include a single new thing.
Absolutely. That is simply maintaining as we are at this moment. Absolutely.
I just think that's so important to remember.
Yes, yes. This is just continuation funding.
Yet it comes with a price tag
Yes.
Of 1.3 million.
Thank you. And I misspoke earlier. I said that was 2.5 million. This continuation request is 1.3 million. I had added in the expansion request, that's coming in next, so bear with me. The next, you can scroll on, the expansion request. And we struggled a bit with this request, because it's an expansion, and by golly, you know, it's hard to ask. It's difficult to ask. However, we, as a team, have decided that it's imperative that we do as much as we can to support our classroom-based teachers and our classified staff by increasing the local supplement. If you remember, the county supports a 10% supplement for certified staff right now. For the past two years, using our fund balance, that was that, as part of that recruitment and retention, fund balance usage, we have increased the supplement by 2% for our classroom-based certified staff, our classroom-based teachers. And that's going, this is the last year of that use of that fund balance. So we did find it important to make that request at this time to continue that. If you remember correctly, our earlier request, you know, what we have been tossing around as a priority has been at 14%. We still think that's important. We think it's important that we move in that direction. However, we also heard what's happening at the county level, and funds are tight, and all agencies need funding. So we did back it down to a 12% request, with the hopes that we would continue moving forward to, towards a 14%. Scroll down just a little bit, please. This also includes a change in our classified supplement. Currently, our classified staff receive a 1% plus $500 bonus, or sub, local supplement. What we'd like to do is change that to an overall 5% supplement. That increases a bit and kind of puts them closer in line with some of our other staff. And we did include a statement in here that any amount, we would appreciate any amount towards meeting this goal from our county commissioners, because we do recognize the budget constraints. But anything to move towards that goal would be incredibly appreciated. And then finally, scroll down, please. Then finally, we have our capital outlay request. I even, I had a hard time putting numbers in here, simply because what we are asking the county is to proportionally increase our capital outlay funding as the school service debt decreases. This is actually a model that the county manager presented at our joint meeting, and the funding is based on the 2425 projection for that. So, and that's why that amount isn't in there. We know that our five-year projected needs are much greater than that $2 million. However, this would put, give us an additional amount, putting us in that, taking, being able to take a step in that direction. We are also intending to access the state R and R funding that is currently available and that we should be seeing increases each year in. So this is the proposed budget request that the district recommends, and that was approved at the Finance Committee meeting. It does require board approval to be submitted to the county. We actually, the county has also asked that we sign a resolution, basically saying that this has been approved. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple, I think. I notice you changed the supplement from 14 to 12. And I guess the question for me is why?
There was a lot of discussion there. And the reason we did, as the Finance Committee actually made that recommendation, simply because hearing that county, county funding is tight, and while, yes, we believe we need to move towards that 14%, getting part of that way would be helpful. And that would maintain where we are right now. That was the thought behind that.
Well, my concern is if you ask for 14, you probably get 12. You ask for 12, you might not get, you might be back at 10. Just my spin on it. I'll leave you alone for now.
Any other questions?
Any comments?
Thanks. I feel like you kind of, you know, just have taken everything that we've talked about in all of our committee meetings and, you know, and really listened to the concerns that we had, and then also, you know, the concerns at the county level, and put together a great, a great budget proposal. So thanks for all your hard work, Vicky.
Okay.
Motion to approve the budget proposal as presented.
And to do a resolution, is that what they want?
I believe so, yes.
I do have one, a resolution kind of written out, just a very simple, similar to our interim budget resolution.
You need a second on that. You need a second on that. I second the motion.
Motion's been made in second to approve it as presented. In prayer. All, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, because I only asked for 14%.
Madam Chair, I would also like to just thank Vicky and her team for all their hard work. Just an enormous amount of number crunching behind the scenes, and she's, you know, the work is far from over. So, thank you, Vicky. Appreciate you.
You'll be hearing more about our quest for a zero-based budget next month. Thank you all.
Thank you for all the hard work. And next is our Health and Safety Operations Facilities Driver's Education Proposal.
Good evening, Board. Chairman Williams, I'm glad to be with you up here tonight. I'm here just to introduce Dr. Hamm, who has a proposal to share with you that Hamm, who has a proposal to share with you that is very positive, and it's not going to cost you a lot of money. So thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am excited to be here and not talk about buses for a change. I know we've talked about that extensively this year. But the other side of the House in our department is driver's education. So just a quick overview, we currently have four instructors, and I apologize, that is an error there with one vacancy. We have had that vacancy since 2022, but we actually have two vacancies at the moment. So out of our six normal instructors, we have four. And interestingly, within that, one of our instructors does not live in this county, he lives in Winston-Salem. So Mr. Abney, who was our teacher and driver's ed instructor at Web, went back to teach at his home in Winston-Salem, but he wanted to continue with driver's education. We'll get to, get to more about that in a second. So just a little bit more of an overview here. So we not only provide driver's education to our high schools here, our, within our system, but we also provide driver's education for Oxford Prep, Falls Lake Academy, and any homeschool student that resides in Granville County. And we're doing all of that with four instructors. And one of our instructors, Mr. Abney, strictly does the classroom portion in an online environment, which leaves us three instructors for the entire county, including all of our schools, the charter schools, and homeschool, to do all the behind-the-wheel training. Next slide, please. Now, driver's education teachers, the way their licensure works, it's very interesting that you do have to have a teaching license to teach driver's education, but it is open to anyone who has a current teaching license or is a classified employee. So these people are considered classified staff, even though they do have a teaching license, and all of our driver's education instructors are part-time. And because of all of these different scenarios, they do not receive our local supplement. So very simply, with the vacancies that we have and those funds not being spent on those two instructors, I'd like to provide our crew that we do have a $2,500 retention bonus, and this will be paid for out of driver's education funds. And really, we're at a point, if we were to lose an additional instructor, we'd probably have to look at like some of our counterparts and totally outsource the entire program to a driving school. Any questions?
Driving school extremely expensive.
It is.
It's like $500 when you go privately.
Wow.
Chris, this funding, you said it would come out of there?
Our, our, our driver's education funds were in my budget.
Motion to approve the driver's education retention bonus as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm.
Dr. Hamm picks up his propane bus next week. Oh, this way.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session, then we'll take a break, and then come back in in about 10 minutes?
I'm moved.
Do we have a motion for the purpose listed in our agenda?
Ms. Lbrecht made the motion. I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're now back in open session. Do we have a motion to approve the certified and classified personnel report as presented in closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. The next thing is upcoming events and announcements, and believe it or not, we have some more committee meetings coming up. March 8th, HR Innovation Committee meeting, 1:00. March 12th, Operations Committee, 9:00. March 18th, Board of Education Policy Committee meeting, 9:00 until. And we have the Finance Committee coming up, March 19th, 9:00. And we then have an Easter holiday and spring break to look forward to, with our next Board of Education and Regional Meeting at, on April 16th. And that's because of coming back off of break, there's not time to get prepared, so. We'll be very, very busy in March, folks.
And Board members, just a reminder, this week, early college is on spring break.
Okay. Good to know.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Is the final report due to the county? Is the final report due?
We meet with them on Friday, however, I'm going to go ahead and mail it off in the morning.
Oh, okay.
There's nothing else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your hard work, and good night, and be careful going home.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.